Good evening, staff, audience, fellow commissioners. I would like to open the seat of Saritos Planning Commission Regular Meeting of Front Stage Number Three, 2025, and call it to order. Unfortunately, we're having some technical difficulties, so I will call on a brief recess to work on our technical difficulty on our days. Two minutes. All right, and we are now calling back to order the regular meeting of the City of Saritos Planning Commission. Before I begin, I would like to thank the staff for quickly fixing our glitch. So again, just testament to the wonderful staff that we have and the quick reaction that they do. So next is item number two. For the Pledge of Allegiance, please rise and kindly join me in refiting the Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of our country.
And one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Item number three on our regular meeting agenda, I'd like to have a roll call, staff, please.
Yes, thank you, Honorable Chair, roll call, please. Commission Member Al.
Present.
Commission Member Chowhan.
Present.
Commission Member Serti. Vice Chair Javeri.
Present.
Thank you, Chair Reyes.
Here.
All members noted present for the record, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Agala. Next will be public comments. This section is reserved for public comments on consent calendar, an item not listed on this agenda, but are within the subject of matter of jurisdiction of the commission. Verbal comments will be limited to three minutes per speaker, subject to the chair extending to a maximum of five minutes per speaker, with a total time allotted not to exceed forty-five minutes unless the chair extends. Do we have any speaker for any public? Okay, none, but we do have a written correspondent, and I would like to, Ms. Agala, to...
Thank you, Chair, for this evening, the Chair and members of the Planning Commission. I do want to note that one piece of written correspondence was received for the Planning Commission meeting this evening under item four. The correspondence generally relates to code violations and permit inspection statistics, and that concludes my summary of written correspondence received for tonight's meeting. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Agala. Having no speaker, I would now close the public comment. Next will be our consent calendar, and this is for approval of the minutes of August sixth, 2025, and I would defer first of our staff again, Ms. Agala.
Yes, thank you, Chair, I would like to note, as communicated or brought to my attention by Commissioner Al, on the August sixth, 2025 meeting minutes, the unofficial meeting minutes for your consideration this evening, on page one, under item five A of the August sixth meeting, the approval of the July second Planning Commission minutes, I would like to note one minor adjustment to the motion and the second. The minutes contained in tonight's agenda packet reflect a motion made by Commissioner Al and a second by Vice Chair Javeri, and that is incorrect. The motion was instead made by Vice Chair Javeri and seconded by Commissioner Chowhand. And so while the unofficial minutes contained in the packet reflect the minutes with an error, staff has made the revision to the official minutes for consideration by the Planning Commission this evening. That concludes my remarks on the item five A, thank you.
Thank you again, Ms. Agala. So now I would like to call for a motion to approve, to accept the minutes.
Motion to approve the minutes.
Do I hear second?
Second.
Having a motion and seconded, I would like to have a vote.
Electronic voting is now active. All votes in, motion carries by a vote of five to zero, thank you.
Thank you. Now we'll go to a public hearing. Item number five, number six A, public hearing. This is for the review and consideration to wait full reading of and adopt a resolution of the Saritos Planning Commission approving wireless communication permit, twenty thirteen dash two, twenty twenty-five, a renewal, a request by applicant-based consulting on behalf of Verizon Wireless. I will now defer this to Ms. Agala for the presentation.
Yes, thank you, members of the Planning Commission. So item six A this evening is a wireless telecommunications permit renewal. So a wireless telecommunications permit is the entitlement. It's the process the city uses to improve the, approve the installation of wireless facility equipment. Those wireless telecommunications permits are valid for ten years, and so the one before you this evening is up for renewal. And so information on the entitlement renewal tonight will be presented under six A by Associate Planner Wyman Wong, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Agala. Good evening, Chair and Saritos Planning Commissioners. Base Consulting on behalf of Verizon Wireless is requesting approval to renew wireless telecommunication permit, twenty thirteen dash two, allowing for the continued operation of an existing wireless facility located at one nine eight five eight Gridley Road to maintain coverage for the surrounding area. For details on this project, I would like to direct your attention to the screen for a presentation. This aerial photo shows the subject property, which is the western portion of Gridley Park. It is generally located east of Gridley Road and north of Delamo Boulevard and a zoned open space. The subject property is bordered to the north and south by single-family residential homes, Zone RS five thousand, to the west by Gridley Road, and to the east by remaining portions of the Gridley Park, which is also zoned open space. This is a large aerial view that shows the existing wireless facility circled in red, which is located on existing Southern California Edison Transmission Tower within Gridley Park. This is a view from within the property looking east at the Edison Transmission Tower with the existing facility and equipment enclosure beneath. This is a view of the existing facility looking west. This is a site plan showing the subject property. The red circle indicates the location of the existing wireless facility. In accordance with Chapter twenty-two forty-two Wireless Telecommunication of the Saritos Municipal Code, WTP twenty thirteen dash two is required to be renewed every ten years. The existing facility approved under Wireless Telecommunication twenty thirteen to thirteen, twenty thirteen dash two has expired. As such, Verizon Wireless has submitted a request for renewal for a new ten-year period. This request for renewal was submitted to the city in an effort for Wireless, Verizon Wireless, to continue to provide wireless coverage in this area. The applicant's renewal request does not include any physical changes to the existing wireless facility, but rather is a request to renew the entitlement only. This ends the portion of the presentation. Staff in the city's wireless technical consultant reviewed the request for renewal and have determined that the facility is compatible with the purpose and intent of the Saritos Wireless ordinance, and it meets FCC guidelines for wireless facilities. No physical changes are being proposed with this renewal. Staff has determined that the facility is category exempt from CEQA. Staff has not received any public comments regarding the proposed permit renewal. As part of the proposed renewal, the conditions of approval have been updated to include the city's most current standard wireless telecommunications conditions. Staff recommends the Saritos Planning Commission connect the public hearing, adopt a resolution approving the renewal request for the wireless facility. This concludes my presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions at this time, and then the audience is a representative of the applicant who can also address the commissioner's questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wong. Do I have any comments from our commissioners? Mr. Reyes?
Hi, Mr. Wong, I want to ask you about this. Does this, is there any kind of consideration if, if, if there's any kind of, not remodel, but like, like check on, make sure it's still safe? Maybe if it's like some sort of like upkeep is maintained on, on the structure to make sure that there's no, no cracks or no damage? So is there any kind of like provisions for that before we renew their, their permit?
I can go ahead and answer that, thank you, Commissioner Serti. With the entitlement renewal, staff, as mentioned in tonight's presentation, reviews the existing conditions of approval, which also includes a review of existing conditions on-site. So staff conducted inspections of the subject facility to ensure that the appropriate signage in compliance with FCC regulations is on the facility and also that the, to confirm that the equipment originally approved under the wireless telecommunications permit has not been modified or added to or removed without city approval. And so through staff's due diligence and consideration of this renewal, all of those things have been confirmed by city staff.
Can we, is it, is there necessarily a third-party audit at all or no for inspection?
So as Mr. Wong mentioned, the city does retain a third-party consultant, and their report is contained as an exhibit to the agenda report. That third-party consultant confirms compliance of the facility and its equipment with appropriate FCC regulations to which the city does not have jurisdictional control over, including emissions or emissions generated from the equipment. A third-party inspection of the unit, and it's not, in staff's opinion, required, and the reason for that is because ultimately the carrier, in this case Verizon Wireless, is required to continually, to continually monitor and maintain the property, and ultimately, the carriers want their equipment to function to provide service to the properties and the coverage area. And so inspections by the experts, who are the wireless carriers and their consultants, as well as city staff, suffice to determine that the equipment is still supportive of the coverage needs of the carrier.
Does this, do they have insurance if any kind of damages to the homes? Do they have insurance coverage to make sure that if any damage happens to the homes around the area, that there's insurance covered?
The city is not authorized to require proof of insurance as a result of any impact to adjacent homes as a result of emissions. That is fully regulated by the FCC, who has very stringent requirements on the location of these facilities and the emissions out from such facilities. The FCC also has jurisdictional control over exposure levels, so that the city does not have authority under, that is solely handled by the FCC.
Mr. Chowhan?
So why did the permit expire?
So the wireless telecommunications permits are good for ten years, and the reason why they are good for ten years, there's a few reasons. One, state law frequently changes in regards to the city's ability to govern these facilities. So when state law changes, oftentimes that results in the city being required to update our Saritos Municipal Code. The latest update to the municipal code pursuant to changes in state law was in 2019. And so the ten-year period allows the city to ensure, one, that our municipal code is in compliance with applicable state law; two, it allows us the opportunity to re-review our conditions of approval to ensure, let's just say hypothetically, right? Hypothetically, if this site wasn't being maintained, then, or if they didn't have the appropriate signage, or let's just say on the equipment enclosure, on the screen, roof tiles were cracked and in need of repair. The ten-year, although we can, within the ten years, require those roof tiles to be repaired, the ten-year period allows the city the opportunity to ensure, one, our municipal code is in full compliance with state law; two, that the facility and its equipment is still maintained up to the city's standards; and three, as included in tonight's report, it gives us the opportunity to update the conditions of approval. So those permits are valid for ten years to give us the authority or the opportunity to do all of those things.
And actually, I was seeking a much simpler answer is, why did the ten-year expire? Was it because of change of rule? Because if this was done in 2013, it should have been 2023 here in 2025. So I'm trying to understand the gap of two years.
Absolutely.
That's what my question seemed to...
Absolutely, so the answer is, it's not as simple. So staff does its best at ensuring that the wireless facilities don't expire. More often than not, at close to expiration of these facilities, the carriers want to upgrade their equipment. And so it's at that time, more often than not, that with the equipment upgrades or equipment modifications that we bring back the renewal. In some scenarios, because of the amount of wireless facilities in the city, there is that gap of expiration and staff working with the carrier prior to expiration. As mentioned in the report, staff has been working with the carrier for shortly after, actually, the carrier reached out to the city shortly after expiration to start that process, but it is a cumbersome process, and then there also frequently is changeover at the wireless carrier companies. And so the person, the personnel who originally pulled the wireless telecommunications permit, who is responsible for seeking the renewal is no longer there. And so it's either through modifications or through staff's efforts to seek the renewal. But I will report that for the facility before the commission today, although the permit essentially did expire, the carrier reached out, contacted the city for their renewal and has been working with the city, not right at expiration, but shortly thereafter.
Okay. On page three, it talks about, as a part of renewal request, the non-building-mounted wireless telecommunications facility was again scored using a certain set of criteria which are listed, and it got a score of twenty-six. Is there a rubric or a sample sheet that you have, and it's more for curiosity and understanding of the process?
For determining, for getting twenty-six? So the city's scoring sheet, now it doesn't have specific definitions, but the city's scoring sheet is found on thirty, page thirty-two of tonight's agenda packet. It's the, the Wireless Telecommunication Facility Criteria Checklist. And for each criteria, criteria one through ten, stealth, height, setbacks, co-location design, ETC, etc., the definition of those things and the criteria for each of those categories is found in the municipal code. So it is municipal code regulation, and that is provided to the applicants prior to the scoring criteria. But we have, for example, the definition of stealth in the municipal code and how it's ranked, the points given. Say, for example, on, on page thirty-two, stealth was given two points, and so it met the two-point criteria under the municipal code.
Thank you. So that is one part of it. There's certain definition. We have a small typo on page four. We've misspelled our own city. In this case, the city of Saritos does not have jurisdictional or regulatory authority, which, believe it or not, I do understand. Then there was some project-specific condition. I do love all of the information provided by Verizon. But there are so many of these old condition, so these are being removed. Because, let's say I look at page forty. Condition number fifty-eight, listen, and then in the bullet underneath is, this section needs to be updated to reflect the specific code section of twenty-two point four-two, point zero five zero, in parentheses, six.
I could provide a little clarification on that.
Can you just talk about the broad category without going through every single one?
Kind of big picture. This telecommunications permit was originally issued in 2013. In 2013, the municipal code requirements for non-building-mounted wireless facilities were slightly different. And so you referenced page forty, we'll talk about condition number fifty-eight. In 2013, condition number fifty-eight was referenced in a different section of the municipal code. I had mentioned previously that in 2019, we updated our municipal code to be in compliance with state law, and so the change mentioned on page forty, to update the condition of approval, to update the section of the municipal code is a result of changes to the municipal code. So in 2013, when this permit was issued, the code was different, and so the standard conditions of approval needed to be updated to reflect the new code sections of the municipal code.
Okay, and then, sorry, Mr. Reyes. When it comes to page forty-seven, the new recommended condition, is this language that we are creating now to basically synthesize the new set of criteria?
I request you to be a little louder because people in the back may not be able to hear it.
Sorry. So when we go to page forty-seven, we are synthesizing our requirements. Is that the intent of this document here?
Thank you, Commissioner Chowhan. So the document that you're referencing, which begins, give me just one moment, on page thirty-three.
No, forty-seven, sorry.
And, yeah, the document begins on page thirty-three and ends on page fifty-three. Is, it's a technical memorandum provided to the city of Saritos by our third-party compliance administrator, that consultant that the city retains to ensure compliance with FCC regulations and, as well as with Saritos Municipal Code. The section that you're referencing on page forty-seven, bear with me, a new recommended conditions, our consultant recommended conditions to the city of Saritos to ensure, essentially to, A, ensure that the site is appropriately maintained pursuant to municipal code, but also, as I mentioned, the wireless industry is changing frequently, and state regulations are changing frequently. And so the new recommended conditions found on page forty-seven and to forty-eight are consult, the city's third-party consultant recommendations for conditions that should be tied to this entitlement renewal.
So in this case, they're representing us?
Correct, we, we, the city, the third-party consultant works for the city. The review is paid for by the applicant, in this case Verizon Wireless, but the consultant works for the city to ensure, as I mentioned, that the facility and the renewal of the permit for this facility is in full compliance with Saritos Municipal Code and FCC regulations.
This language is very interesting on this page, and I'll just read one sentence. The permittee will be permitted to supervise the city's offices. The permittee will be, may supervise the city's offices. It's just, it's very awkward, reading and understanding. But otherwise, no questions?
Thank you, Commissioner Chowhan. Before we proceed, we have some more commissioners who have questions. I would like to acknowledge the attendance of our council member Jennifer Huang, who's in the audience today. Welcome, Councilmember Huang. Councilmember, councilmember, Commissioner Al.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. To sort of follow Chowhan's train of thought. So technically speaking, these communication towers, they don't have a valid permit as of now, correct?
Yes and no. So they have valid permits for their equipment. Yes and no. So they have valid permits for their equipment to be in the city of Cerritos. They have the building permits, the city permits for compliance with building and electrical codes. For the entitlement permit, the WTP before you today, it's not necessarily that it's not valid, it's just expired and, well, I guess therefore not valid. And the city could, should the city have the resources to do so, require the decommissioning of the equipment because that WTP has expired. But ultimately, the goal here is to ensure adequate cellular coverage to this area. People traversing through this area, the residents and businesses occupying this area. So ultimately, while the city could pursue that action, the goal here is to work with the wireless carriers for compliant, or to ensure that their wireless telecommunication permit is renewed. And 99% of the time, the carriers initiate this on their own. And we go back and forth on the plans and having the wireless consultant assess current regulations, city assess current regulations. But ultimately, the goal is not to require the decommissioning, the removal of the equipment, because we want to provide the coverage. And so the goal is just to seek the renewal of the permits to ensure that the site is adequately being maintained, the conditions are still applicable, and that the city is in compliance with all applicable state law.
Thank you. But I think rules are rules. If we say these permits are expired in 10 years, they expire in 10 years. And so to, in the future, to avoid or minimize this kind of a gap between the expiration and the renewal, can we attach to the approval as a, and a condition that the applicant need to apply for a request, a renewal, one year before the next expiration?
So staff does have conditions requiring the renewal. I'll be, I'll provide a little bit greater clarification for members of the commission today. If the city's community development department was fully staffed, we would be doing more proactive contacting of these applicants prior to facility permits being expired. Due to limited staffing resources, as I mentioned earlier, these permit renewals are usually sought during equipment modifications, etc. And as I mentioned, 99% of the carriers act, proactively seek renewal. And so, plain and simple, it's a combination of a few things. Changeover at wireless companies, but short staff by city staff.
Thank you. I have one more question. It looks like these communication towers, they're situated right in the middle of public space, right? So does it make sense for the protection of the property owners as well as the public to have some kind of a fence or some kind of enclosure around the base of these towers? So that, you know, you don't have liabilities? Or maybe that's the jurisdiction of FCC?
Thank you. That's a very good question. So the property owner in this case is Southern California Edison. But irregardless of the property owner's requirements, you'll see here on the screen before you, the city does have a covered roof equipment enclosure here just for that purpose. In other jurisdictions, the requirements for the enclosure of the support equipment may be a little less stringent than the city of Cerritos. But we do require all ground-mounted equipment, all ground-level equipment at this site and any site in Cerritos to be wholly contained with a locked, within a locked, enclosed equipment enclosure for the safety of the community.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Yao. Commissioner Chowhan?
And I'd like to follow up with something that Commissioner Yao spoke about, which is, can we add this feature to the asset platform that the city is procuring? So that we have a flagging mechanism for any outstanding permits? So that if we had it in the system where it was flagged, we would know ahead of time, there's this thing coming up. But again, this is just a use of technology. And I know that we recommended the asset, some funding for an asset program.
Yes, absolutely. That is correct, Commissioner Chowhan. The city council awarded a contract earlier this year to significantly upgrade the city's permitting software right now for any project. Where, while, whether it's a wireless facility, a residential patio, where a permit was pulled right now for any project that the permit is set to expired, it's manually, it's done manually on paper, and in our system. But you're absolutely correct. There is no, right now, we don't have the ability for it to flag us, right? And so through the city council-awarded permit software that we're working with consultants on building, the software will be able to do just that. Notify staff. You know, for, in this case, we'd want to know probably about a year in advance for a roof permit, you know, maybe a month, two months. But we absolutely will have the capability with the new software. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Chowhan. So do I say any more like? Question for myself here. Do we, what's the penalty for expiring the permit for any of this facility or any building or industry that have a permit and then expire? What's, what's the penalty if they lapse, one year, two years, three years?
So the penalty for the wireless facility, wireless telecommunication permits, is that the city could require the decommissioning, the removal of the equipment from the facility. As I mentioned, you know, ultimately, the goal is to provide coverage to constituents in and traveling through the city of Cerritos. And so we have not yet requ, enforce that penalty, but we do have the authority should we need to.
Yeah, but which would probably, unlikely to happen in any city, they probably would not go that route. The reason I'm asking that, it seems like the onus of making sure that the permit is current is on the city's staff. And there's no penalty for the businesses to have it lapse. So what's, there's nothing for them, nothing, there's no hurt on their side. So even, even if we have the flagging and if they flag, what if we tell them, hey, you need to renew your permits? And they say, okay, well, in due time. So how do we enforce that? How do we enforce? And what kind, what kind, do we have a stick to, other than decommissioning? Because I'm saying, you know, if, if there's no penalty, I will get around to it. And that's just my, that's just my, the way I'm thinking. So if there's really no penalty and we could not decommission it because it do a disservice to the community and our citizens and the rest of the area, then it's, it's useless. There's no. So that's, how do we prevent? Is this, is this a problem to have a lot of? Or is this one of a kind, one-off, that it doesn't really happen all the time?
Yes, thank you for that question. So you are correct. This does not happen very often. As I mentioned, usually through upgrades or modifications to the facilities, the renewals coincide with those. And then, as mentioned, the responsibility for the renewal falls on the applicants. And the applicants do proactively do that. This is a rare occurrence to which the time has lapsed. And so while this one is before you and it may seem like a significant problem, I had mentioned staff resources, etc., this is few and far in between.
Thank you. I think, Mr. Commissioner Yao?
Yeah, so if we approve it tonight, the next expiration date, would that be 2033 or 2035?
If approved tonight, you'd be approving it for a new 10-year period running from 2025 to 2035.
Thank you.
Okay, seeing none, we will now open for public hearing. If any in the audience would like to speak before this, before this item? Yes, ma'am?
My name is Sarah. I'm with Base Consulting, representing Verizon Wireless. And thank you guys for the presentation and your excellent questions, Wyman. Nice to meet you. And I just want to let you know that Verizon does also have processes in place to renew our CUPs. And as you did mention, there's a lot of times changeovers. And we were not the original entitlement, we were not the original company that did this entitlement. And Verizon said, ooh, we saw this renewal come up, we need to get it to somebody. They got it to us and we started rolling with it. So that's how it works and it does have a lot of changeovers.
Thank you very much for that explanation.
Sure, thank you.
Do we have any other comments from the audience? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve?
I make a motion.
Do I get a second?
I second.
Having moved in second, we would like to call for a vote for this.
Okay, with a motion and a second, electronic voting will now be activated. It appears that we are missing two votes. Thank you. All votes in, motion passes by a vote of five to zero.
Thank you, and congratulations. We are now moving to item 6B, Precise Plan 2025-8. This is for review and consideration to weigh full reading off and adopt a resolution of the Cerritos Planning Commission approving Precise Plan 2025-8, a proposal by residential property owners to construct a first-floor addition and new second floor to existing single-story residents. Staff.
Yes, thank you, Honorable Chair. Item 6B this evening is a residential addition project within Shadow Park. Item 6B this evening will be presented, will also be presented by Associate Planner Wyman Wong. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Agila. Good evening again, Chairs and Members of the Planning Commission. The property owners of 12903 Bracknell Street are requesting approval of Precise Plan 2025-8 to construct a 300-square-foot first-floor addition and a new 11,150-square-foot second floor to existing single-story residents. For details of the proposal, I would like to direct your attention to the screen for a presentation. This is an area for the subject property, which is Zone Development Area 4, and is generally located west of Sheemaker Avenue and north of 195th Street within the Shadow Park Master Plan community. This is a large area view that shows the details of the property. The property is bordered to the north and west by single-family residential properties, also Zone ADP 4. To the south is Bracknell Street and to the west is Trintum Avenue, both 80-foot-wide private residential streets across which are other homes in the Shadow Park community. This is a view of the front elevation of the existing residence looking north from Bracknell Street. This is the west side yard looking east from Trintum Avenue. This is a view of the rear yard. This is a proposed site plan showing the proposed layout of the home. As mentioned previously, the applicants propose to construct the first-floor addition at the front of the existing residence, a new porch and a patio, a garage addition, and a new second floor. As proposed, the project will meet all setback and lock coverage requirements. This is the proposed first-floor plan, which, when completed, the first floor will include a kitchen, a nook, a living room, a den, three bedrooms with bathrooms. This is proposed second-floor plan. When completed, the second floor will include a new master bedroom with a bathroom, a laundry room, an additional bedroom with bathroom. This is adjacent neighbor plan. As shown on the site plan, there is no direct alignment of the windows with adjacent properties to the north and east. The home to the north of the subject property is a two-story residence in a setback approximately 30 feet, 30 feet from the neighboring home. And the residence to the north is a single-story home. In addition, standard condition of approval, 27D, requires that all second-floor bathroom windows have obscured glass and shall either have a minimum steel height of five feet or be fixed up to five feet as measured from the adjacent finished floor. All second-floor bathroom windows on the submitted plan meet this requirement. Therefore, privacy issues have been mitigated. This is the proposed front elevation. The new two-story residence will feature a contemporary architecture style and will be finished with white-colored stucco and white trim. As proposed, the front elevation will feature a gray-colored stone veneer that covers a section of the garage walls and parts of the first floor of the residence. In addition, the residence will be featured white-colored siding that wraps around the new second floor. This is the rear elevation. Roof of the residence will be covered with a Spanish brown-colored blend clay tile. This is the west elevation. All windows and doors will be detailed with a minimum four-inch white-colored trim. This is the east side elevation, which features the same architectural hands since found on the other elevations. Architect has prepared a color palette and material board for the planning commissioner's review, which is provided for you on the dais. This concludes the presentation. Staff recommends the planning commission approve Precise Plan 2025-8, subject to all conditions of approval contained in the report. This project is calculated exempt from CEQA. As of tonight, staff has not received any comments as a result of the public hearing notice. Tonight, the architect and homeowners are in the audience. And at this time, staff is available to answer any questions that the planning commission may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wong. Commissioners, any comments from commissioners? Commissioner Cerdi?
Hi. I want to know how long it take for this permit to get accepted from the time it submitted? And how long did it take to get to this point?
The plans, thank you, Commissioner. So the plans for the requests under the precise plan were received earlier in this year. They went through several reviews for, during what staff calls the design review phase of the project, to go back and forth to show compliance with all the minimum requirements of the city's municipal code, as well as with the specific development standards under this area development plan. And once that was completed and all other application materials were then prepared for tonight. So I believe all, as of July of this year, all those materials were received. And that's when the project is formally deemed complete. I believe just we missed the timing for the August meeting, so that's why it's being brought to you tonight.
Thank you, Amanda.
Thank you. Any commissioners? Commissioner Yao?
Just a quick question. On the east elevation, the windows, all the windows with obscured glass or just the second floor? It's not entirely clear to me.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Yao. Would you mind repeating your question? What's the question? Is the second floor windows?
So the windows, because the east elevation is the side that may have some privacy issues with the neighbor to the east, right? So the, one place where, that it mentions that the glass, the windows will use obscured glass, is that just for the bathrooms or for all the second-floor rooms? Or the entire east elevation?
It's, the obscured glass is required for all second-floor bathroom windows only.
Understand. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Yao. Commissioner Chowhan?
So congrats to the homeowners. I see the Shadow Park area is constantly renewing houses, so it's good to see improvement. I was amazed to see the backyard in that condition, in that, in that area. I was amazed to see the backyard in that condition, in that, in that area. It's interesting to me, uh, CEQA compliance, I'm looking at page five. And staff has made the following finding, goal LU-11 of 2004. General plan calls for the preservation and enhancement of existing community and neighborhood character of sense of place. Is that a legal term or is just that a subjective? And how does one define that? So overall, project is good, so. And then over the page on condition four. Pursuant to section 15301 California Environment Quality Act CEQA, the proposed project is exempt from CEQA, which usually is for, any potential adverse impact can be reduced to a level of insignificance through the standards of development, including development code and city's precise plan. I take it to mean change is good and change will happen. And I hope we can do that for the rest of the city and codes as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners. Um, I think my, my observation is that, um, every time we have applicant review, that we, the question is how long did it take? Unfortunately for my experience, I only hear when people complain about, oh, it takes so long. But I know there's a lot of applicants out there who are happy with the process, who are thankful for the staff professionals. Do we have a way to know if, is there a box that says a, uh, like a next starter review or something that, hey, uh, how did we do? Do we? Cause I would love to hear the good comments from the people who applied to the process because I, I know you guys do a standing jump, but I hear that rarely. Because you only hear from people who complains. Most of, sometimes, that's, that's one thing. But I know you guys are doing a good job, but, um, I just, you know, for, for me, I would just like to hear. Uh, if there's any cards that comes in from the applicants to the, to the offices, share it with us. You know, like letters saying, hey, thank you for this, whatever. Cause I would like, I would like to read it here, you know, if, if we can do that so that the staff and the community knows that we are doing a wonderful job. So that's just my comment. Uh, seeing no more, see, oh, Mr. Javari?
If you can please help me understand this. As a commissioner on the planning, we are supposed to be looking at the plans, whether they meet the guidelines, whether they meet the codes, blah, blah, blah. And I don't think we are, you're at the planning commission. We should be discussing how long it takes or how long it took at the planning department. Am I correct?
Thank you, Vice President Javari. Ultimately, the purview of the planning commission is to determine a project's compliance um, with the Cerritos Municipal Code and general plan. You are correct in that. Um, I would like to, I know it was discussed at the meeting last time and it's, um, was raised today. I would like to know that, uh, and I, and I did go into this a little bit at the last, um, at the August Planning Commission meeting. When an application is received to the city, by the city of Cerritos, more often than not, and as Mr. Wyman mentioned, the architect is here in the, in, in the audience, more often than not, at first the middle, that is not the project that's before you. Um, it takes a significant amount of time from staff as well as applicants to bring a project, uh, in compliance with the Cerritos Municipal Code and the development standards of the city. And in this case, because this is in Shadow Park, to bring a project that is architecturally compatible with the design standards of the Shadow Park Master Plan Community. I will also note that when, um, a project is proposed to the city of Cerritos, and I'll just use Shadow Park because the project is Shadow Park. Um, a lot of the master plan communities in the city with HOAs also require projects to go be, before the HOA Architectural Design Review Board. And so while staff will begin reviewing projects, ultimately, a project is not scheduled before the planning commission until we have in hand, in this case, the Shadow Park's approval of the project. And then until we have worked with the project applicant, um, and homeowners, right? Because ultimately, although it's staff and architect projects, ultimately, projects are the homeowners. And so a lot of times, you know, it is, um, providing resolutions or options to homeowners that, let's just say, I don't know, hey, you can't put that glass, uh, fence. You can't put a glass side yard gate because it's translucent. You can see through it. And side yard gates are required to be solid so that you can't see what's stored behind the gate. And so, hey, project applicant, let's work together to find a solution that meets you as a homeowner, your, your preference for what your project will look like, but still is with compliance of the Cerritos Municipal Code and the architectural standards. And so, you know, I think, uh, the question about the timeframe for review of a project isn't just staff's time for review of project. It's working daily, weekly with the homeowners. It's working weekly or monthly with the project applicants. It's the timeframe for architects and engineers to make revisions to the plans and resubmit and then finding, uh, bringing the project in compliance with the city, but also a project that the homeowners want ultimately. And so the timeframe for when an application is submitted, submitted to the city, say the project before you, to the timeframe it gets before, between the, or in front of the planning commission has so many variables. So even if we were to say, uh, this application was submitted a year ago, there are, there could be circumstances, say, you know, the, the applicants didn't want to work through the holidays. Architects, um, you know, the architect took a long vacation. Um, and so the timeframe for project is so circumstantial and with so many variables. So it is difficult to quantify in days or months uh, how long projects take before they get before the planning commission this evening. That's a long way of answering your question.
Oh, thank you.
But I hope that provided additional clarity.
My concern was that as a planning commissioner, we are here to look at the, whether this meets the guidelines, whether this meets the codes, rather than looking at how long did it take? Because we are, as planning commissioners, we are not really concerned how long it took. Because for whatever reasons, number of factors, as you mentioned, it may have taken.
Correct. That is correct. The purview of the planning commission is to find the projects before you in compliance with all applicable state or all applicable municipal code requirements and general plan goals and objectives.
Right.
That's correct.
Very good. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Javari. Um, I'd just like to add my, um, my five, two cents here with that. I think, um, I think what we're trying, what I'm trying to, um, to capture really is the experience of the, the, the experience of the serious resident. It's not about how long, it's about what requirements, it's how did we treat you here? You know, what was your experience like? Is it a good experience that you have? What department, what part of the process needs to be tweaked? Because we are in the service delivery world. You know, it's not just five feet here, two feet there, you know? And the bottom line is, we need to deliver good service to the citizens of Cerritos when they are applying whatever permits they're applying for. So my, I think the question that was evolving is the, if it takes them five years and the, and the applicant was happy, so be it, right? And because we work with them through changes, through circumstances, they run out of money, they make changes, they, it's, it's the experience that we're trying to capture. So we're doing a good job, but unfortunately, in any businesses, you only hear when people complain. It's rarely that you hear people, hey, they did a good job because they expect us to do a good job. But it would be nice if we can have somebody come here and wrote something and I would love to share that and it's really to the public and show how wonderful, you know, the planning department and from A to Z is we did a good job and we helped them, we assist them, we work with them. So that, that's, I think that's what we're trying to do. So, uh, do we have any more? Uh, Mr., uh, Commissioner Shor?
Hi, I'd like to, uh, if possible, do you think we can make a recommendation that we do offer like a, um, some sort of exit survey, okay, for, for applicants, how they feel about the service they receive from planning commission, I mean, from the planning permit department?
Yes, thank you, Commissioner Sirdi. So I'll provide kind of, um, just on this overall topic. So Chair Reyes, you are correct. Um, the city of Cerritos receives a lot of positive feedback. We have, the city has exceptional staff in every department and we are very fortunate here in the city of Cerritos that most of the staff are very long tenured, tenured staff here. And, um, the level of care and attention that, and I can speak for my department, but I know citywide that we provide project applicants, uh, I'd like to say is above all other cities. Um, we receive frequent commendations of staff. We receive positive remarks to staff and, um, while those remarks go in personnel files, you are correct, we don't share, uh, the positive remarks, uh, uh, to the commission. Um, you know, we often have before the planning commission, project applicants that you will see frequently and they do a lot of work in Cerritos and they continue to do work in Cerritos because of the care and attention that is provided to their projects. Um, and so while we don't do more or less an, an exit survey um, for all permits and projects i- in Cerritos, we receive, uh, very frequent positive feedback from applicants about the level of service that this great staff, uh, provides at the public counter. We just don't share that. And, um, you are correct that, um, you know, you receive, uh, inquiries or, uh, information of perhaps an unpleasant experience. Um, we, while we do provide, uh, statistics to the planning commission of permits issued, permits finalled, um, I am hopeful that the amount of calls or complaints you receive are few and far in between for the amount of projects that we are processing because the great staff in the city and at the Department of Community Development uh, provides exce- exceptional service. And so, um, I can work with the city manager to see if there's a way to provide that information. Ultimately, it is, uh, a part of their personnel record. But, um, I'll work with the city manager to explore, uh, just what I'm hearing this evening.
Seeing no more comments from the commissioners, I would, um, it is now open for public hearing for precise plan 2025-8. Do we have any comments from the audience? Seeing none, I will move this, uh, public comment close. And now we will move for a motion to approve precise plan 2025-8.
I moved, I moved to approve, um, precise plan 2025-8.
Seconded.
Uh, staff, uh, staff recommendation?
Thank you, Chair. A motion was made by Commissioner Al, a second by Commissioner Chowhan. At this time, staff will go ahead and activate electronic, uh, voting. Electronic voting is open. All votes in. Motion passes by a vote of five to zero. Thank you.
Congratulations to the applicant. Uh, we will, we will now move to item number seven A, reports from designated commission liaison.
Thank you, Chair. I don't have any reports this evening. Thank you.
All right. Uh, how about reports from planning commission members? Do we have any reports? Uh, any report from activities from the, um, planning commission members? Do you have anything to share? Nothing. Mr. Al?
As you probably know, I was, uh, away for a private trip overseas. I went to China and, uh, Japan, uh, for a three week vacation. And, uh, there's something I want to report to you because when I was on my, uh, journey, I was thinking about the, uh, the light, the light rail, uh, project that we were talking about. So there, my understanding is that currently the plan is for the rail, um, from the Union Station to Artesia. When it passes through, uh, Cerritos, you will be, uh, there will be a like, uh, overpass, like a, a bridge kind of, uh, the, the, basically the rails will be, uh, lifted from the ground. So I said, how's that going to work? And so now China happens to have the largest, uh, bullet train network in the world. And Japan is, has the longest history of bullet train. Uh, now, of course, we're talking about a light rail, not a bullet train, but the concept is the same, okay? Uh, rail traffic. So I said, how, how are they going to do it? Um, when it goes through like population centers? Cause I was worried about the elevated, the light rails going through, the noise and there are privacy issues. Uh, how do they do that? So, so, so watching. It looks like whenever the train goes through a populated, populated area, they have, uh, like materials on both sides of the, the bridge to, to block the view and also reduce the noise. So I thought, you know, some of them are just two walls on the side of the, the bridge. Sometimes it's just like, like a tube like thing. The train is just going through like, uh, a tube, like almost like a tunnel, but it's like a material. So I suppose that's something that we could, uh, uh, mention to, um, LA Metro when, uh, when it comes up, uh, next time. So that's, um, my report.
Thank you, um, Mr. Al, Mr. Al, and welcome back. Thank you, back. We miss you. Um, Commissioner Chowhan?
Thank you. Um, let's see. Went to the workplace harassment training. Staff are putting that on? All right. What did I learn most? Our presenter was quite entertaining, but he talked about complacency. Why do we do the things that we do repeatedly, over and over and over again? Why do we not get different results? And that ties back to partially the projects we have approved and the public comment that we received. And you're right, um, Chair Reyes. We only hear the complaint side. We don't see all the positive work that goes on. The staff works very hard. But sometimes, the rules that the staff is guided by must also be changed. The city was founded in nineteen sixties, seventies. That's fifty plus years ago. When I read some of the guiding rules that we have, I cannot determine which was when it's founding and which was revised when. It is very confusing. There seems to be a set of ad hoc changes and it's about time the planning commission takes a look at it. It is foolish to attempt to take a look at the entire thing. However, it should be within our purview to take a look at specific items, discuss them in the light of would it benefit residents and or businesses? Because the goal of this commission is to keep businesses thriving, residents happy. And at the end of the day, we all want to know what the rules are. Are the rules fair, consistent, and are they relevant in the modern day and time? So when I run into people here, there in the park playing pickleball and I run into people here, there in the park playing pickleball and. We discuss the issues coming up. Many time neighbors or people feel like they've been slighted. There has been a setting, a changing set of rules over time. We talk about, um. Gates that needs to be solid. There was a time when that wasn't a requirement. So how do we consolidate, inform the public, have a discussion so that we can. One, bring concerns to our residents because. While I'm here talking about this issue, when I'm on the street, I try to explain the process, what it's like from the other side. So in order to make some of these rules more fair and more consistent, I think we should take a look at some of these rules that we have. So I would like the commission to think about it. One of the first one I'd like to consider. Are the lighting rules and the signage for businesses? Are those fair, consistent? How can they help the benefit? When those ordinances were created about signs. The prevailing technology was neon signs. You have a completely different set of technology available. When a business, so I live on the, I'm gonna talk very specific. Carmenita in Artesia. There's a barber shop, great little barber shop. My son goes to it. But you would not know it by driving down Artesia. There is no signage or the signage is very small, you can't see. Can we take a look at those rules regarding signage? Is that within the purview of the planning commission?
Thank you, Commissioner Chowhan. So generally speaking, uh, the Cerrito City Council is the only. A body with the authority to, uh, direct staff resources, time. Uh, and money, if it results in money. Uh, the city council is the only authoritative body to direct the use of staff resources. Uh, should the planning commission just, um, make as a whole with consensus. Make a recommendation to the city council and I'll just use this example. Um, should the planning commission choose to make a recommendation that the city council directs staff to. Look at line, lighting and signage rules for businesses in Cerritos, a few things would need to happen. One, that consensus direction cannot be provided this evening because it has not been agendized. And so if Commissioner Chowhan, you want to direct staff to. Bring back a, a report to the planning commission, uh, just discussing this recommendation so that the planning commission can take a vote. On whether or not to refer that matter to the city council. You would need a majority of tonight's planning commission members to agendize it, uh. Uh, the October planning commission meeting. If you receive a majority this evening, as I mentioned, staff would bring a report to the planning commission, just reiterating. Uh, your request, uh, this evening. If in October, uh, the planning commission discusses the item. And decides ultimately to refer the request to the city council. Then the item would be presented to the city council for the city council to decide. If they, uh, want to direct staff resources into. Looking at the lighting and signage rules for businesses in the city of Cerritos. That generally speaking is the process, uh, for the authority of the planning commission to direct resources. And to seek, uh, city council's authorization, whether or not the city council. Indeed want staff to look into, in this case, lighting and signage rules for businesses.
So I would just have to see consensus here first for, even though I've discussed this matter with a council member or two. Who said I should approach it here first?
So under the city's policy, um, for, uh, the use of staff resources, time and money. Uh, the commission tonight could, um, you could seek consensus. For staff to agendize it on the October planning commission meeting for formal discussion. But because this item is not on tonight's agenda, the planning commission as a whole cannot discuss signage or lighting rules of the municipal code.
Absolutely understood, yes. So therefore I seek consensus from the planning commission. To seek permission to look at the rules regarding line, lighting and signage.
Okay, so I'll, I'll just do a roll call.
So there's a motion. Do we need a second or just consensus?
No, so not really a motion. It's, um, Commissioner Chowhan's asking. For the planning commission to vote yea or nay for staff to bring back. This item so that the planning commission can have a discussion. At its October meeting on whether or not to refer this request to the city council. So.
Can we talk before we say yea or nay?
I would defer to the city attorney, but generally speaking, we can't get into the weeds of the rules. You can discuss the process, absolutely.
Just amongst ourselves.
Absolutely. Oh, amongst yourselves, uh.
Right here, right now.
You, you can have a general discussion about the process.
The process, whether we should.
Correct. You can talk about the process, but we can't get into the lighting and signage rules.
No, no, not about whether, whether it would be beneficial for us to, uh, take it to the next month's meeting.
Yes, you can discuss that.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, I, I would like to, uh, make sure that I still have control of this meeting. So I would like, if you want to say anything, just let me know and I will recognize you. So you want to speak about the process?
Yes.
Mr. Javari, yes.
So, uh, Commissioner Chowon, great ideas, uh, well thought of. Uh, my only concern would be at this point of time. I think the city has budgetary issues. They are right now really tight on a lot of things, yeah, that even they want to do it. But they are only always talking about budget and financial constraints and blah, blah, blah. So. I think at this point of time, even if we. Do decide to have that for the next month and even if, next month, even if we say yes, go ahead. I sincerely doubt whether the council will even take a look at it just from that aspect. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Javari. Commissioner Short, Sirti?
I, 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 I don't think it's relevant if they're gonna look at it or not. I think rather what we're gonna do. And I think it's, it's critical that we, we, um, add this to the next, next agenda for an October. Because I think, um, you know, whether, whether councils could look at because of budget issues, that's not relevant to me. I, what's relevant to, to me is that, that we act and try and make the city better.
Uh, Commissioner Al?
Yeah, I, yeah. I agree with, uh, Commissioner Javari and also applaud, uh, Commissioner Chowhan's ideas. My concern is that, uh, number one, I agree with him that our main job here is to review. Projects that are brought to us and make sure that they, they conform to city, uh, building codes and city ordinances. Uh. Obviously, we are, we can, um, like, like, uh, uh, Kristen just told us. They explained to us that, that the process, we can make a suggestion to the city council to. Pick up some, um, issues to change city policies. But my concern is that, that where do, we, we really should to think. Um, more thoroughly, uh, because I think the issues that we're concerned with. It's not just the signage. There are other issues, uh, building codes and, uh, like the. House to yard ratio and all kinds of, uh, issues. And so where do we start and where do we end? Are we prepared to? Make a suggestion for the city council every month, every two months? I don't know. So that's why I think we probably need to think more thoroughly. Uh, see, think about all the consequences before we make a decision. So if I may, you know, we could, um, review this issue maybe at the next meeting. So what's the hurry?
Okay, uh. Uh, let me just, I'm gonna put my two cents in. Uh, if, if. If what we, uh, we want is a thorough discussion, get into the weeds and really have a thorough examination of this. Then we should have to vote for it to be discussed next because we can never discuss this without us voting it first. And putting it in a motion will not cost the city any money until we vote on it. And we cannot vote on it until we have discussions, which we cannot do tonight. Because it's not the process. The process is giving way to the idea. And give us an opportunity, got a month to explore, to think. And whether to vote yes or no to the precision after thorough discussion. And thoughtful debate of where we want to go. So. I'm glad, I'm glad to say yes to this, uh, to this consensus to give us. A venue to discuss it more thoroughly, to give us time and to maybe discuss the parameters of what we do. But we cannot do it absence of the vote. So we cannot be talking about, so having the consensus now, is there any more discussion before we vote for consensus? Do I see any more? No more, uh, staff please?
Before we vote, um, I want to make sure that, um, I'm, I'm clear on. The consensus direction that Commissioner Chowhan is seeking and, uh, and I'll just, um. Recite my understanding of what you're seeking. Um, you are seeking the ability to have a discussion. By way of an agenda item on the October planning commission meeting about the city's existing. Municipal code requirements pertaining to. Lighting and signage regulations for businesses, meaning commercial, industrial, zoned properties.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. So if it's okay with the chair, I'll take a roll call vote on this consensus.
Yes.
And the commission can answer yea or nay with your microphone. We won't do electronic voting. Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Member Al?
Abstain.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Chowhan?
Yes.
Commissioner Sirti?
Yes.
Thank you. Vice Chair Javari?
Yes.
And Chair Reyes?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm, uh, the consensus has been received, um, by, uh, for Commissioner Chowhan's. Uh, request for an agenda item at the October planning commission meeting. Thank you.
Okay, uh, since everybody made their report, um, the last to make a report, anybody else would like to add to the report of the commission, commission members? Yes, Commissioner Short?
Uh, I just want to add, I know, um, the reason why I'm asking how long it takes. For plans to get submitted is because I'm just trying to, um, um, understand if the. Illustrate that there's a shortage of staff. That's the reason why I'm doing that. It's not because I. I know some of it is circumstantial, right? So, so my, my goal is to, to illustrate the fact that. I think they need more staff. That's the reason why I'm bringing that up. Okay, and then, and then, and then two issues I want to talk about as well. Was that, um, you know, I want to know what is the, uh, if there's on, like, if there's. Like permanent or, uh, non-permanent work is being done in the city and how do we address that issue? In terms of like, for example, like say someone does, gets their house remodeled, is unpermitted. Is there, is there a way to keep track of that? Okay, how do we address that issue?
Thank you, Commissioner Sirti. If work is being done in the city, um, without permits. Um, notice of violations are issued by. Code enforcement or building safety inspectors and or both, um, for unpermitted work. Or I'll, I'll just add on to that, um, when residents come to the city of Cerritos with a project. It can be as little as, uh, front yard landscaping to as big as the projects that come before the planning commission. Our job as city staff is to ensure that the project, um, and the properties are in conformance with the existing regulations. Of the Cerritos municipal code. So through that process and especially projects that come before the planning commission, you will. Recall that often we have project specific conditions of approval to bring. Properties in full compliance of the municipal code. So through the code enforcement team. Uh, or the current planning team and community development, teams in community development or through. The Los Angeles County, uh, Building Inspectors violations are issued, uh, to bring properties in conformance with existing regulations.
All right, any more, um, actually this is just for reports, okay, reports for the planning commission members. Um, I would like to report also that I also attended the workplace harassment prevention and that was really recommended, highly, highly recommended. I know if people took it zoom on online, you probably missed half of the. The, the action because it was really an interactive, uh, workshop and it was great. Um, and that's, uh, all the report I have. So. Before we close, I would like to thank the staff once more for a really a great job. Preparation, briefings, um, wonderful, wonderful job. And to the audience who participated tonight and to all the people watching. Uh, I'll remind you that, uh, our next meeting is on October eighth, same time and, um. Again, thank you and hopefully see you next month and that the commissioners keep doing your great job, good questions. You guys I know are really getting into the weeds on all this, on, on all this, uh. Paperwork that our staff, uh, prepared and we do, we do read your stuff. I mean, we, uh, taking it hard that we, Mr. Chowha makes sure there's a correction on the spelling and all the stuff, so. So I will now move to a close to adjourn the city of Cerritos Planning Commission regular meeting, September twenty twenty-five. Thank you.